If we can call this meeting to order, we do have a couple, just to let everybody know. We had an air conditioning incident earlier today, and the air conditioning on the first floor in Town Hall won't be working probably till Monday. So we will do our best to move through this meeting with all appropriate haste so that we're not here, and this is our onsite air conditioner to help as best we can. So with that as an intro, let's rise to the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up on the agenda is Board of Selectmen appointment, the appointment of First Selectman Kevin Kiley, Republican, 237 Steiner Road, to term 11/11 through 11/15 to replace Mr. James F. Walsh who resigned. May I have moved or accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'm happy to kick it off. I am, as we know, Mr. Walsh had to resign, and we'll talk about that in a future meeting more, but right now, today is about Mr. Kiley, and he has certainly served with distinction, as First Selectman Tetra is well aware, having served with him on the Board of Finance, and as a leader on that board for many years, and has given so much to the town. I am thrilled and happy that he is going to be joining us on the Board of Selectmen, and certainly will be supporting and welcoming him to the board.
To add on to that, Mr. Kiley's been very involved in the town for a long time. As one of our procedures for appointments, we ask for resumes from the nominees. I was almost embarrassed to ask for Kevin's resume, because there's so much that he's done. I did have the chance to serve with Kevin on the Board of Finance for six years, part of that under his chairmanship of the board. He was always a very active, thorough, very well-versed, not only in the issues that came before the board, but also on how they impact the town on a larger basis. And I was always impressed that Kevin was able to take the larger view on some of those issues and put things in perspective. And I'm looking forward to serving with him on the Board of Selectmen. With that, here's some public comment. Any members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, two thumbs up from the second row, and was that a five thumbs up, or was that a?
I'd just like to...
Mr. Walsh, if you would identify yourself and come forward.
Jim Walsh, member of the public, 85, Breck. I do not say enough good things about Kevin, and I would highly, very highly recommend him. I've had the pleasure of serving with Kevin in various capacities, from being on the RTM to being on the RTM, and then him being on the Board of Finance, and him being Chair of the Board of Finance, and showing the leadership he did during that period of time. I could not think of anybody more prepared to take on the challenge of being on the Board of Selectmen than Kevin. He is, you know, he's got vast financial knowledge from serving as CFO of many different companies, but he also knows this town. He knows how it runs, knows the charter well, knows our budgets inside and out, and I think he's going to fit great with the two of you. And I think his service to the town in all past endeavors has been exemplary, and you couldn't ask for a better person to fill out. I couldn't ask for anybody better to serve out the remaining part of my term. So I highly recommend you do it. I would also like to thank the First Selectmen for putting Mr. Kiley on at the beginning of the meeting, not only because it's hot and his family's here, which I think is a great thing, but as we saw, when I was sworn in the last time, I was sworn in at the end of a meeting, a meeting that had the Fairfield Metro Center change contract in it, one that was improperly, never went before town bodies. And we had Mr. Saxel here telling us that that was proper. It turns out, through McArthur and English and all the stuff and testimony we heard, that that was completely improper. So I think it's always best to have three members of a Board of Selectmen, so I think it's great that you're doing it at the beginning, so Kevin can start his work. So with that, I would hope that you would put Kevin on, and I think he'd make a great replacement for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments from the public? Ms. Stenick, if you would also come up and identify yourself.
Sherri Stenick, Rock Ridge Road. I just want to congratulate Kevin. I want to also thank the RTC and the Board of Selectmen for supporting this nomination. And I've known Kevin for, you're on the RTM together, we've done things. I said you didn't have these children when I knew you first, so it's been a very long time, and he's always been a wonderful supporter of the town. He's always done his homework, and he really loves the town, and I know that all the decisions he'll make will be decisions for the best interest of the town. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments here?
Yes, I just want to say, what an endorsement, and that's a real strong statement. And I think that that statement, in terms of looking out for the best interest of the town, is really wonderful.
All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Kiley. Would you care to say a few words?
Do I just want to say?
Actually, you can say a few words as the nominee who just got voted in, and then you can, we can step through from there.
Sure, I'm glad to say a few words.
Or we can, whatever order you'd like. We're going to be very generous today.
Yeah. It's very warm in here, so I'll just say a quick couple of words. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, Mike and Kristen, for your kind, for your fine comments, and your support, and your confidence that you have shown in me, and you can count on me to work hard, to represent this town, every citizen, and to be fair-minded, and to be a great member of this board. The biggest thank I have is for my family. My wife Erica, my two boys, Aiden and Aaron. You can't serve the town of Fairfield for 19 years without the support of your family. The late nights, the meetings, the homework, the caucuses, the emails, the phone calls. If you've done it, you know what I mean. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of commitment, and it takes a lot of time away from your family. It's important, and I'm happy to do it, and I'm glad to do it, but I could not do it without them and their support, so thank you very much. I'd like to also thank Jim and Sherri for their fine comments. They mean a lot to me, especially coming from two former very well-respected selectmen. It means a great deal to me. Thank you very much. With that said, I'm ready to, if it's okay, to be sworn in and go to work.
The, one of the things we're doing a little bit differently for Mr. Kiley is that we've asked our town clerk, Betsy Brown, to attend in anticipation of Kevin being approved, to swear him in so he can begin his official duties as we speak. So, Betsy, if I could ask you to come up? And Jerry, is this, you wanted us to use the mat here for this, or?
Over by the podium, it's one.
Okay, Kevin, if you could stand out a little piece of carpet. That's our X marks the spot piece.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and faithfully discharge according to law. There you leave as a selectman for the town of Fairfield, to the best of your ability, so be gone.
I will.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Is there something else you'd like to say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like you're talking, very similar to you.
Yeah.
So with that welcome aboard, we promise to have a name tag for you as soon as we can.
Well, thank you.
For the rest of this meeting, that's Kevin.
Thank you.
So welcoming, Kiley.
Do you have your packet in front of you?
I'm good. I have everything I need.
All right. Next up on the agenda is approval to consider an act upon the minutes of June 20. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second? I'll second. Any discussion? All right, we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Please note that it needed to be unanimous, and it was. Debbie, would you like to say a few words? You're always so verbose at these things.
I just like to thank you all for reappointing me. I do know it is okay to say what Kristen already said, which is, I do hope we have as few meetings as I've been to in the past, but we will all try, I know, to make the commission a valuable asset to the town, and to help us do the right thing all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. All right, next up, an appointment to the Ethics Commission. Jill Kelly, Republican from 158 Reading Road. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm thrilled that Mrs. Zief is willing to continue in this role, and she served on the Board of Finance and has served in many capacities in the community. I hope that the commission will remain as inactive as it has been during the time of her service.
Kevin, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, sir. A big thank you to Mrs. Zief. I have served with her in the past on both the RTM and the Board of Finance. She was a stellar member of both of those bodies, and I have the utmost of respect for her, and thank you for your offer to serve again.
Again, Mrs. Zief is one of those people that's been an active volunteer in town. I think that anybody who's been involved here for any length of time has served with and around Debbie, so I want to thank you for continuing your service to the town, and thank you for your leadership that you've shown us in the past. Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Please note that it needed to be unanimous, and it was. Debbie, would you like to say a few words? You're always so verbose at these things.
I just like to thank you all for reappointing me. I do know it is okay to say what Kristen already said, which is, I do hope we have as few meetings as I've been to in the past, but we will all try, I know, to make the commission a valuable asset to the town, and to help us do the right thing all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. All right, next up, an appointment to the Ethics Commission. Jill Kelly, Republican from 158 Reading Road. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I had the opportunity to speak with Mrs. Kelly, who contacted me, as she was unable to attend today. And Mrs. Kelly, though I have not had the opportunity to serve directly with her, I have experienced her work and advocacy on many levels in the town, and also I'm thrilled that she is willing to serve. I think she is someone who really has the best interests of the town at heart at all times. I think she's an excellent appointment. When I spoke with her, I talked about the fact that this is a newly reforming group, and I'm sure that they will get together and have an organizational meeting, and I think she will be a very valuable asset to this commission.
Mr. Kiley?
Yes, sir. I first met Jill Kelly in 1993, and from that moment forward, I've worked with her on many town issues, senior tax relief. She was on the Board of Selectmen when I was on the RTM and the Board of Finance. She's always exhibited love for this town, and she's always been a very honorable and approachable person when you had an issue, when you had a problem that you needed to solve, and I can't think of a person that would be better suited to sit on this commission.
Like my colleagues, I've had a chance, in the political world and volunteer world, to work with Ms. Kelly, and in addition, as part of my day job, when I was in real estate, I had a chance to work with her in our professional lives, and also serve with her on the committees and the Board of Directors for the Greater Fairfield Board of Realtors. So she's somebody else who's been unbelievably active in our town. It's hard to think of many people, if anyone, that's been more involved over more years than Jill Kelly, and made a bigger contribution to our town. So I'm thrilled that she would consider stepping up and volunteering for this again, and I'm just, I think that's one of the great things about Fairfield, and if you look for somebody who's one of, almost one of our legends in town as volunteers, Jill Kelly would fit that bill. Any further comments before we go to public? No. Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Congratulations, Jill, and we look forward to seeing you soon. All right. Next up, we had a, the next item on the agenda was a resolution to name the road at the Fairfield Metro Center. We still have not kind of made contact with the family on that, so I'd like to move to postpone that item to a date certain, being our first meeting in August, August 1st. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Congratulations, Jill, and we look forward to seeing you soon. All right. Next up, we had a, the next item on the agenda was a resolution to name the road at the Fairfield Metro Center. We still have not kind of made contact with the family on that, so I'd like to move to postpone that item to a date certain, being our first meeting in August, August 1st. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, the Special Project Standing Building Committee to hear and consider an update from Rich Special regarding the Sherman School renovation project. Rich is following up on a presentation he did at our last meeting to answer a few of the questions that came up. Mr. Special.
First of all, congratulations to all that reappointed. I was over at the school just a few mere hours ago, and part of the update I can provide via the recent visit can also address the items that were of concern at the last meeting. The upshot of this afternoon's visit, if I can kind of like go in that type of order, if it's okay with everybody, the structural steel at 1 through 8 is already up and been inspected and accepted. The balance of the structural steel is to be completed, and the final inspection is done, is to be done today. So we're actually ahead of schedule on the structural steel. The last of the known asbestos, emphasize the known asbestos, was removed and cleared over the weekend, not the holiday, but Saturday, Sunday of the previous weekend. The ERV 1 was completed, is complete, and was scheduled for July 9th completion, so we're ahead with that. ERV 2 is completed and ready for inspection today as well. ERV 3 is 80 percent completed, and was scheduled for completion on July 18th. So obviously, we're in pretty good shape schedule-wise. The, one of the items that was a concern was the flooring and the slope of the flooring. Morgan Carpet and Floors was there onsite today, and the floor was partially pulled up. I did an examination of that floor for my own edification, and what it appears is that the, first of all, there was moisture damage which occurred because of the concrete, as I explained at the last meeting, always retained some moisture. They applied the tiles too quickly, and that didn't allow for a bond, a proper bond. And those tiles had come up, they replaced them, but the mastic that they put down to attach the tiles to the concrete floor was not evenly applied. Consequently, you had what you would call bubbles or slope, whatever you want to call it. That, as I said, the contractor is in it, I saw it, he had a good deal of it pulled up today, and, and we'll just, we'll monitor it to make sure that we're getting as near a level floor as possible. As I mentioned in the last meeting, there is, there is to be no back charge, that's all to be done as a no-charge repair. I met with Scott Bartlett today, who's a member of the DPW Town of Fairfield, because I had a problem with the concrete, there's a drop-off section that needs to be extended for the handicapped children is not complete, and this, I know there's going to be an argument between the contractor and the architect regarding who submitted the drawings when. In an attempt to offset that particular problem, and also, I believe, to get a better price, I'm having Scott Bartlett have Kowalski Construction take a look at it and give us a price for it. So this will eliminate, do a few things, eliminate any involvement on a part of the town, and some negotiations or lawsuits, and I think hopefully we get a better price than we got as a change order from THP. There's a sketch that came out, and I do have a sketch of that. Decide what work, if you want, I can give it to you. It's...
Perhaps you could move it up here to Sheriff?
Sure. I have plenty of these, though.
This is really the first time we're getting into this.
The, it's the concrete work, flat work, concrete work that's needed to be done for the drop-off for the handicapped children.
Do you have a couple? Do you have another?
I only have the one.
Oh, you only have the one, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I also have here a sketch that was not provided by the architect. It was an in-house sketch. As you recall, at the last meeting, there was some conjecture about the positioning of the furniture. I will reiterate again, the committee has nothing to do with the furniture. We don't, we allow the principal, all of the people that, in the Board of Education, to make those decisions on what they want. We're not, that's not our involvement. And so that, this, there was a security address, the security question that came up at the last meeting, that certain secretary is not positioned, that they could see properly, that was due to the way the furniture was detailed by others. There is an attempt that's been made to rectify that particular visual observation problem, and it should work. Looking at these drawings, it should be an easy fix.
Yep. Given it's not a building committee issue, who is responsible for?
The contributors on that were the principal, the Board of Edu, the Board of Education people, I think, I can't remember her name, Pam?
All right. So as I'm looking at this drawing, to the left of this space that's kind of off the paper, that is where the foyer is, the lobby, right here.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and this is where, this is the lobby right here, this is where they would come in, and this is a double lockout, where they would come in through this door, sign in, physically check who they were, and then they go through another door over here to get into the main school portion. That's not detailed.
I think Sal Nervito has probably a good handle on that as well. Okay. Have you had any communication back from the principal? Is this going to work for them?
The principal is currently away, she's not, I think she's away on vacation for two weeks, I'm not positive. I know she's not in the school, but the architect actually happened to look at it today, because he was at the meeting. I don't think he's here, but he thought it would work, and suggested that it was something that they had initially presented themselves, although they were not responsible for any of that particular design.
Okay. Sorry.
The, in addressing some of the problem, some, not necessarily a problem, but when the ducts were attempted to be installed, it was found that there was some conduit that was in the way at exactly the location where the duck had to go. And we had Mr. Connolly, Tom Connolly, come out and take a look at those penetrations to make sure that we were doing everything legal, and he had pronounced that, in his judgment, that it was the case, that we conforming with code. There was also the issue at the last meeting regarding the locks for the inside doors. I sent you, there was some concern about the price on my part, so we took a look at pricing that the town could get, because you do a lot more purchasing than THP does, and THP's price was fine, it was favorable, in fact, by a little bit. So those inside doors will have their locks, and they do take about five weeks for delivery. The other thing, by going through the town, I hope that we could get in earlier delivery, but it doesn't look like it's going to be worth taking that out of his contract, so that remains with him. And I will make sure that the committee votes on that particular change order as approved. The, as you probably are aware, we again looked at the drop-down screen in the conference room, and the figure for the conference room removal is almost $3,000. The manufacturer will not take back the screen, so it is, in my opinion, and by the way, the majority of the committee feels that it's just, it's a tool that should be utilized, because it's going to take us, it's going to cost us almost $3,000 to take, take out a $3,000, $400 and $50 mechanical screen. I think I've collated everything pretty much from what transcribed today and what was of concern at the last meeting. I'd be happy to address anything further that you would want.
Okay, thank you. I've got a few questions to kick things off, if that's okay. And one, I guess, let's start with the auto screen. I'm still confused as to how a $3,500 screen, it wasn't part of an any, any spec, and frankly, is poorly positioned within a room to use, got designed into something, and who signed off on it?
That, as far as, that was always on the drawings, and those are the items that the architect, I assume that the principal, and others that are involved in that interior, furniture, fixture type of stuff, reviewed thoroughly.
Is there any discussion, when an architect's doing some value engineering, is there any time where he sits down and says, "Look, here's some options to save 5, 10, 15, $20,000 worth of work," especially when a budget is this tight, this important, because of the FEMA constraints we're working with overall?
Right. By the way, if we did take that down, that would contribute to our FEMA construction costs.
Yeah, I understand. What, I buy the fact that it's too expensive to take it down, Rich.
Right, right.
I'm at the other point. How in the world did we put it in? Who signed off on it? Who suggested, who suspected? Was this just an architect run amok, or was this actually, there's no spec, so we can't say it's needed for the students?
I wish that the...
I still haven't, I didn't hear last time from the architect, other than saying everybody approved it. I heard it was in the drawings. Well, I took enough classes in college to read blueprints. The average person isn't going to see that screen on a blueprint, and there's nothing on that drawing that says, "This is a $5,000 automated screen that we're putting in." And by the way, here's an option we could do, we could just keep a blank wall, which would cost us nothing, all right? So when I look at that type of decision by the architect, my question is, what the heck other kinds of decisions did you make, and how much money did you cost us over what we should have had to pay for this building? And as an ongoing process, I want to understand how to stop that kind of decision from getting incorporated in. I'm not necessarily blaming the building committee, because you guys are volunteers, you have a day job, you come back at 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night, you're handed a building specification that I was told was two or three or four inches thick, and I was told this was on page 325, or something ridiculous like that, and I don't expect you guys to memorize all 450 pages. I expect the professionals, like the architect, not to add $3,000 into a project that's not absolutely necessary. So I'm trying to figure out, what do we change? How do we make sure we never do this again? Do we change the charge? Do we never hire this architect again, because they obviously don't understand value engineering? Do we make sure that they get a sign off before they put in something that's optional, not necessary? How do we fix it, Rich?
Well, regretfully, the architect doesn't hear. I would love for him to...
Given the way he answered questions to the last meeting, that's probably good, since the air conditioning isn't working.
The, the truth of the matter is that the fellow that was here, the architect that was here the last time, is, doesn't seem to be in any response ability to this drop- was here the last time, is, doesn't seem to be in any response ability to this job currently. Brandt is, seems to be the architect that is addressing matters currently.
About a year too late, but it sounds like a good move.
Well, the only thing I would say, Mr. Tech, is that this committee does not decide what the Board of Education, and there were others that, I mean, there was a slew of meetings, I was told today that there was 49 emails just regarding the furniture. The furniture that got positioned in a room, 49 emails that the architect responded to from others, not from this committee, from Eileen Roxby, I would assume, from the construction manager for the Board of Education, from, I know that one of the members of the current committee, John Convertito, he was involved in a lot of meetings, and I think Pamela Iacona was involved.
And Rich, there are no doubt, when you do a school, there's literally hundreds of thousands of decisions that are made like this. What I'm trying to do is get a cycle of learning, to look at what happened, and I'm trying to take this one example as a case study. The $3,500 isn't going to make or break Sherman School, I understand, but from a standpoint, if we're going to learn, all right, we put an automated screen in a conference room on a sidewalk at one end of the room that the door opens into, over a phone that's supposed to be there according to building code, on a taller-than-an-eight-foot ceiling, we spend dollars on something that shouldn't be there at all, and I'm trying to understand how that happened, so we can avoid that type of thing in the future. Right now, it may be a sunk cost, it may cost us, we may have to spend more to undo that decision than we did to do it, not trying to be foolish in that regard, but trying to say, how do we avoid this on the next school? What do we, what do we learn from this, so we don't make, what do we tell the Riverfield School Building Committee, so they don't do this? How do we help them? And I don't mean to put you on the spot with having all that answer now, but I would like your building committee to consider that, and say, if we were going to avoid that, how would we avoid it?
You cannot just put it on the building committee, because there were so many others that were involved in that decision. We, again, that's a Board of Education choice, we don't, we never, if you were asking me, well, you know what, you vet the architect a little better, you do something, you check his credentials a little deeper, you do stuff like that.
I'm not trying to blame the building committee at all, Rich, what I'm trying to do is say, given the building committee's charge is to put this building together-
Right.
-at the most reasonable cost, and maybe that's something we should add into future charges. But certainly, I look at this and say, where was the discussion, how, who generated this idea? How did it get there? How did the building, who didn't tell the building committee? And I guess I do look to the architect now. I mean, they can have whatever discussions they want with school officials, but the architect works for the building committee. The architect should be sitting there saying, you know, we're being asked to do this, and there are other ways to handle this that are more cost-effective. When do we have that discussion? And I would be interested in the building committee coming back, giving us their ideas on how to improve the process. Forget Sherman for a moment, how do we keep this from happening again? Given you weren't told, when should you have been told? Given this went in, how did this get in there without your knowledge or approval, and are there other items like this that we need to have on our checklist, so we're looking for that? That's where, that's what's kind of stuck in my craw on this one.
Well, one of the things is that I personally am not totally committed to ed spec, totally familiar with ed spec, I look through all the other people that are dealing in that stuff.
Just to be clear, in this case, because we weren't going for school reimbursement, there wasn't an ed spec. So when I say it wasn't in the ed spec, it wasn't because there were other things in the Sherman School ed spec. There was no ed spec for Sherman, so theoretically, that makes everything at the option of the building committee. So that's what I'm trying to get to in terms of, and again, Rich, I don't mean to put you on the spot in trying to answer that right now, but I am looking for the building committee to give us their insights from what they saw.
Well, I could tell you, I would suggest that you talk to the other players in this that were in on these meetings, that we were not in on. There was constant meetings that we, that were not part of-
So what we're saying is there are other meetings-
Yes.
-and there are cost decisions being made that are not run through the building committee that are costing us money.
Not necessarily cost decisions, items that they want to have in the school, furniture items, drop-down screens, nurses, cabinets in the nurses' quarter, coffee, where they wanted to have a coffee stand, and the need for us to actually chip out concrete so that we could put that in there. And these are, these are things that were presented to us, that they are items that were needed for the project.
Okay. All right, I don't want to belabor that point here, but I would like to come back and possibly-
I suggest that you, respectfully suggest, that you talk to the other Board of Education committee members and see what they, they had to know about it.
No, reasonable, reasonable point, reasonable point.
Just on that point, Rich, I mean, on a, on a decision like that, what is the chain of communication? Forgetting about who actually requested, but how does the information go from the requestor to the architect, to the building committee? How does it get done?
Typically, the principal or somebody would say that, that the nurse told me that she would, that there's a need for privacy, and we'd like to have a door over here. And then that item is presented to the architect, and he incorporates it into his drawing, finds that it was not in his drawing, and then he, it becomes a change order, PCO, becomes a proposed change order, that is then presented as an alternate, that would the building committee want to spend that money on cabinets in the nurses' quarters, or whatever the item might be. And most of the times, I mean, we're looking at this project very, very closely, I'm trying to save money every step of the way. We're not going to do the water fountain, $2,000, because we'll let, let the staff that's on Sherman's staff do epoxy painting around it, or do some plywood around it. I'm not spending $2,500 to protect for a possible splash from kids that, you know, that are drinking out of the water fountain. We've been pretty austere now, and attempting to adhere to this budget, and we have been successful. We are well away from the FEMA limit, and we don't have all the credits in, because we're in arguments with some stuff. So at the current time, we're on the budget. Again, I can't promise 100% that we're going to stay on the budget, but if we get all the credits back, and I was haranguing with the THP today, you've got to get this stuff to me, because we want, we need it by Wednesday, we need a schedule by Wednesday. Sal Morabito's been beating the drum as well on getting schedules, because I don't want to get any delay of job or back charges from this guy, and the way that I can control it is through the, through a written-down schedule. Because I, yes.
So back to my question, whether the requestor is a teacher or principal, the administration, the school administration, or even the Board of Education, those folks have direct contact with the architect on their own, outside the building committee, work through him or her-
Yes, yes.
-and then those incorporated kind of requests then come to the building committee?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on kitchen stuff, there's kitchen staff, there's people that represent, that were, are specialists in kitchen requirements. They had meetings in the kitchen, and the architect was always present, to my, to the best my knowledge, he was always present, and they make their recommendations, what they would like to see, and what's possible, and so on and so forth. You know, there's a lot of stuff that gets, like, there's still a problem with the sink, there's a three, a three-section sink, and only a two-section sink has been provided. It's on the punch list, we're going to get to it, but that was something that, I would never make that decision, I don't know enough about, you know, that stuff. But that's, came out of kitchen staff, that came out of-
And again, Rich, just to be clear, I'm very concerned that the building committee is made up of volunteers. You guys work all day long, and then take your free time and come back and do this. So what I'm looking for is, are we giving you the right support? And I'm looking for, looking for future building committees to see what we can learn. You all did the most important thing, which is make sure that we came in this phase under the FEMA limits, to make sure that we didn't incur millions of dollars in additional costs and rework. So of all the things you did, that's obviously the most important, as well as, other than the items we mentioned, the school was in very good shape in terms of what we looked at, but there were several issues that came up along here, so I don't want, I certainly don't want any of these comments or our discussion reflect on the building committee, but it definitely reflects on the process in terms of how these things get done and how they get incorporated in to the project, and that's what we'll try and learn more about.
I would say, to address that, the building committee should be probably more comprised out of construction professionals, rather than somebody that would, you know, not that it's not good to have a banker on the committee, but some, I think, and then the idea, the best thing that could happen is you try to hold on to some of the people that you have, that have been down this road a few times, and know how it works, and knows the players, and knows who you've got to watch out for and stuff, not, you know, first of all, the economic climate that this job was bid in, we had people in the industry, it's called the lowballers, okay? And that's always a danger, because they're going to be looking for where they can make up for the money that they didn't put into the project that they should have. So it starts right from the bidding process, and you don't necessarily go with the low bidder. In this instance, on this job, we didn't go with the low bidder, because we would have been really making a big mistake.
And again, Rich, getting, getting back to the question Hannah, the questions we have are all about the design.
Yes.
All right, so the fact of the matter is, it seems more of an issue for the architect, and how the architect interfaces with the process, and interfaces with the building committee, and what decisions the architect is making on their own versus updating the building committee on, and making sure the committee is well-informed and can advise them properly. Because if you're never told about the decision, there's no way that you can advise on it. If you see something on a drawing, and nobody's sitting there saying, hey, there's a much cheaper option, you won't know to raise the question. So I think that it's certainly not an issue that I would lay at the feet of the building committee at all, in that regard.
Yeah, may I, a couple follow-ups. Thank you for coming back to us, I appreciate it, certainly. Just a couple thoughts and comments, and then some questions. I know, I myself am certainly interested in having people who've had experience on building committees, but as you know, it's an arduous process, so sometimes people need a little break from that. I, I'm concerned in terms of the process, my understanding, which may not be correct, that in some other building committees in the past, and this may be through you, Mr. First-Elekman, to maybe Mr. Morabito, is that the communication process, which I referenced last time, that the communication process really is important, and how that happens, but that those requests and suggestions and ideas really have, and again, I'd like to ask this of Mr. Morabito, come through the building committee chair. So in other words, rather than there being those 49 emails, that there's a primary point of contact, and I'm wondering, if I may, through you, ask Mr. Morabito, if that has on other building committees been standard practice, that it's the building committee chair who takes in those various suggestions? Because as you pointed out, there are things that you don't know. If you're someone working in the school, in the kitchen, you know that facility in a much more intimate way than you would as a volunteer on the building committee, so there certainly are some valid suggestions, so.
Mr. Morabito, would you mind coming up and taking a question or two?
Hi. As I understand, the question you asked is how has that worked, the communication path on different building committees? Each one's unique, each building committee has a different personality, so to speak. Sometimes the committee chairman might say, please have the dialogue, those 49 emails that you talked about, might be simple to work out, normal business practice, is it blue, is it the third blue on the column on that sheet I gave you? That kind of back and forth, and they might just say, you know what, keep me in the CC, so I'm aware of the discussion going on. Sometimes it's more important than the color of an object, it might be how a boiler functions, or how an air conditioner functions, something like that. Some building committees, the chairman wants the information being funneled through them so that they can pass it to who they believe is the correct person. One's not more right than another, it's, here again, it's the person that's in the chair for the committee that sets that standard, and we go with the flow, so to speak. And I ask that question upfront, so I'm not stepping on toes and not getting in the way of how somebody believes their committee should be run. So I'm here to serve and get the information, whether it's through a chairman, or a designee on the building committee, or straight to the architect or the engineer, each job is different. Not one of them's been the same since I've been here.
Thank you.
And now?
Yes, just thank you, Mr. Morabito.
You're welcome.
My, and my, I guess my comment, again, specifically to this project, I will reiterate what I said the last time, is I think, whatever the communication flow is, that I hope it's clear and known to all parties involved, and that it's clear that in the end, it's the building committee who has to watch the purse, so to speak, and that, and I know that you're well aware of that, but just in terms of general process, I hope that we can have that going forward. I have a couple specific questions. In terms of the sloping floor, you mentioned that tiles had been pulled up, and I think Sleckman Walsh put it very aptly when he talked about the marble rolling down the floor last time.
Right.
So it was a large area, the floor, was furniture removed from that area? Is it just one part of the area that's being repaired?
Basically, it's the hallway is where the, and it's going to be the entire area.
Okay. So it is a large, it's not just one-
No, no, it's not, not a pop, you know, that's, you know, measurable by one foot by one foot, it's a larger area. It's not bad everywhere, but you can't have it anywhere, so the whole thing has to come out.
Okay, all right. May I continue for a moment? Something that you said in talking about both the handicap drop-off and the door locks, I just wanted to clarify and see if I understood correctly, you talked about with the door locks, the possibility of taking out of the contract and looking at the town doing it, and then you'll have the committee, and that is not what's going to happen, you're going to leave it be and have the committee vote on a change order. I'm a little bit confused by that. Can you, can you explain that?
Sure.
Just in terms of, you have, there's a budget for this project, and we're working within that. How is it, how does that work?
The town, Fairfield buys locks, equipment, all the time, so they have a relationship with, Lindquist, I think it is, Lindquist, Sal?
Alvin Saig. Alvin Saig.
Anyhow, they have a relationship with the particular manufacturer, and I think Lindquist is one of them too. So when I saw the price that the contractor had submitted for the locks, I thought it was very, very high, and I wanted to get, again, make sure we're not getting cheated, and so Sal did some research, and the pricing that was submitted by THP was a little bit less than what the town is getting it for. So that's why I'm changing it back to get it from him, rather, it just would, it's not worth getting the town involved for the difference. In fact, the difference is less.
Okay, that's good news.
Yes.
The reason that I wanted to clarify that, is someone hearing that might misunderstand that the town operating budget, I wanted to be clear, that that's not in any way part of the town operating budget, it's simply trying to find efficiencies and-
And the best price, yeah. The same thing with the concrete, that I'm having that investigated a little bit. I have ulterior motives, like I said, because I see a problem legally coming between the contractor and the architect. I eliminate that problem for myself, and I think I get it for the town, and I think I get a better price, too. I'm pretty sure I'm going to come up with a better price. And we're not talking about three or four, we're talking about $19,000, so it's-
That's the concrete with the drop-off area?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Earlier, you were talking about the ERV?
Yes, Energy Recovery Events, which were part of what I think was a very, very important part of this project, because it allows us to recapture, we went through this, but, you know, we, we have a highly efficient unit that weighed less, that cost us less money, delivered the same movement of air, if you will, and strictly, so we were able to take that money and put it into ERVs, which pay for themselves, we don't know exactly- We don't know exactly, but we think we have a five-year payback on that.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, we were all aware of what ERVs stood for.
Just while I'm thinking of it, too. During, and this by no means, what you're saying, how do you improve? We've had the transition on this committee, we've had one, two, three, four, I think, four for sure, different people, leave the committee during this whole Sherman process. And it's like, it, the education factor that it had is gone. And then you bring in somebody new, and we're starting to reinvent the wheel again. You know, it's just, and then, like I said the last time, you have a core membership that, thank God you have that, otherwise you couldn't even have the meetings. So it's just, it's just an adjunct to what you were asking me about, and I didn't want to forget it.
All right, just getting back then. First of all, Mr. Special, as you described, what you did with the concrete, what you did with the locks, in terms of looking at that, I mean, that's, to me, the way the building committee should work, in terms of knowing what some of the trade-offs are, and looking for ways to do some value engineering. So I compliment you on that, and compliment the committee on taking place. I think that one of the questions is, from a process standpoint, can we make some changes to allow that to happen in more places? And especially on some things that are perhaps more optional?
Yeah. Again, the key to that is to have people that are, that work for Turner Construction, or people that, you know, retired from ONG, or architects, or people that are in the business, so to speak. Because I can tell you, I can speak to you about concrete till, I designed the foundations for the World Trade Center, okay? I know concrete. I built, designed the bathtub, the concrete portion of it. That's my forte, I know that stuff. I don't know stuff about kitchens. I don't know electric, you know, or barely know electric. So it should be a committee that is well-rounded. And also, somebody that has purchasing skills, perhaps, there's a, that's my suggestion.
Well, thank you for that, and again, thank you for the time that you put in on all this stuff. There was another area that causes some concern, last time we had a chance to talk, and again, someplace the architect didn't seem to do a very good job describing, kind of how it happened. And so, let's go back to the conference room?
Yes.
In terms of where the walls don't quite meet the windows, so there's, you don't quite get the privacy, and the ceiling, the wall going up to the ceiling didn't quite have a solid fit--
Right.
--against the ceiling. What was the architect's explanation, again, for that kind of design glitch?
Well, I spoke to him about it today, about the plastic that, there's a plastic baffle, if you will, that has been put in there, and according to, what I'm hearing is that it is not soundproofed adequately. It does do something, but it's not adequate. So, we brought that up to the architect again today, and he's going to have to come back with something that's going to be a little more, not a little bit more, it has to satisfy the staff that are using that room.
Because again, again, getting back to kind of the design issue, one is that we added that conference room, so there would be some privacy, or the ability to have a private conference, and I think during one of our tours, a private conference was going on in there. It also seems, given the positioning of the screen, that any projector hitting that screen would have to be right on the immediate side of the wall, between the administration area and the conference room. So that any noise generated in that room, from any sound of a PowerPoint projector or anything else, would be right next to the administration area.
I asked that question today, coincidentally. I said, where are you going to position, where would you normally position the projector? And I, they came, again, not my area of expertise, but I know enough to ask the question, all right? And from what I'm being told now, is that projectors are that size nowadays, and they could be put, from here to go on to that wall over there.
Yep.
So, I said, that kind of like answered me about that, answered the question about that. As far as the infill above the conference room and the principal's room, that is going to be taken care of, that's a punch list item.
Okay, and that was just missed by the architect in the original design part?
Yes.
And what about against the glass wall?
Well, as I just explained, that's not satisfactory going to staff that has to use it. We told the architect that today, and he has to come back with something else. Will they seal it, or whatever? That probably was, in my opinion, was probably a design problem. Should not have--
So something else missed in the design process as part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, and again, that's the kind of thing that, certainly, when you're just looking at drawings, you're never going to catch. And, you know, expecting volunteers on a building committee to catch that stuff is hard. I think that's why we're looking to our architects, to do a better job.
Exactly, that's what the architect, he's supposed to be that professional that, again, I wish he was here to speak for himself.
Mr. Kylie, did you have any follow-up questions?
Just a couple things. Just quickly, on the projector--
Yep.
On the screen thing, I know we can't fix it, but I will say, in the last six months, myself and my IT guy have done a lot of research, and for my company, we purchased two very small projectors that are portable, that can go room to room, city to city, they plug into your computer, you paint the wall white, they're drop-dead beautiful.
Yeah, right behind the screen is a white wall.
Yeah, the clarity is amazing. They're about $500 for a good one.
You're rubbing salt in the wounds. Right behind the screen is a white wall.
But that's what we do, we use it for corporate presentations, we use it for our investors. I mean, it's not a, you know, shoddy presentation, they really do a great job. So, just on that, and I have a couple of just big-picture questions, if you could just help me back up for a second here. Punch list. If something's on the punch list, by definition, is that something that was, or is, part of the original project scope should be included in the price? Or is the definition of something on the punch list, something that is incremental in cost to the project, or are both types of items on a punch list?
It could be either or. It could be something that was, especially when you have an alteration, you have new construction and alteration. With alterations, you always have, going to have punch list items, because you just don't, there's always the unknown. When you open up a wall, you find that there's $90,000 worth of asbestos that had to be removed, okay? There's cables that were in the way, that you had to demo the wall before you could find that they were in the way. So, speaking to that problem, that becomes a punch list item that was not known.
Makes sense. But, so there's really three kinds of things that go on there. There's the, the things you know about, you know the kitchen's going to need a sink. It's got to be part of the project, it's not done, it's on the punch list. There's these things you find behind the wall, there's mold, there's whatever, it's got to be fixed, got to go through the process, got to hit a punch list. What about, back to the kitchen sink again, what if the budget called for a sink that was this wide, but upon further review, people want a sink that's, you know, three bays deep, and it's going to be more expensive? That's, that's an add-on, a change, but it still ends up on the punch list? I just don't understand the differences between the things that are on there, what are paid for, what are additional?
There's some items that the health department will tell you that you have to do, and who's ever designing it might not be aware of the latest change, that the health department says that you have to do vegetables in one pocket, it has to be a certain distance away from a washing area, the chemicals have to be stored so many feet away, and these things change. An architect can be up to speed, up to speed, and then all of a sudden, it's, it's a new item. Or, like, as happened here, one of the sinks that was in the catalogs, they no longer manufacture it, so it had to be changed. There was, the, there's a shield that goes over the food, to protect children, people's sneezing on it, bacteria shield. There was, something had to be changed on that, even though, you know, it was, basically the concept was there, but the actual design was not as indicated. It had to go to something else, because the manufacturer no longer made it that way.
I get it. Okay, so let me ask it this way. I understand all that, the unknowns, the changes, the whatevers. What about, I want a screen, I want something new, I want something that's not clearly part of the project?
Well, that would become a PCO, Proposed Change Order, that you didn't like the paint job.
Yeah, give me a chandelier, whatever it might be.
So, then, depending on what's in the budget, always what's in the budget, whether you could do it, your willingness to accommodate the people that have to use it, and your opinion as to whether you think that's frivolous, or something that has to be, is a valuable teaching tool, that should be utilized.
And once you approve it, it's approved, and it hits the overall punch list?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Thanks.
Any other questions at this point?
No, I'm good.
All right. Mr. Special, thank you very much, for coming back twice. It's not our custom to provide public comment on a report, but--
I understand, but I think you're diligent, since we've referenced the Board of Education and I can address those things for the record.
If you'd like to come up, please do.
Himalai Kono, Chairman of the Board of Education, and I just want to go on record and let you know that I was never privy to 45 or so said emails that were going around about furniture or dropdown screen. To my knowledge, nobody on the Board of Education was privy to discussions about furniture or dropdown screens. There may have been discussions between central office, administration, or administrators in the building about furniture, but not the Board of Education. And to my knowledge, in discussions with the principal, nobody ever talked about a $5,000 mechanical dropdown screen. I'll offer my opinion, if you'd like it, on the building process, having served on the Special Buildings Project Committee, before taking over the chairmanship of the Board of Education, I think I was on that committee for three years. And I was on the Sherman project. There were never discussions about a screen. There were discussions about modifying the building, so that there weren't cloud ceilings, so that we would have privacy, and those things were not listened to. But somehow, we got $3,000, $5,000 mechanical screens, and now I don't have cabinetry in the nurse's office. And I apologize, but I'm annoyed, and I'm angry, and I find this very frustrating, and I think that this is an excellent learning tool. And my suggestion would be, going forward, that absolutely unequivocally, anything requesting, anything that has to do with the expenditure of money or not, go through the building chair. Under no circumstances should anyone from any one member of the committee, or central office, or a teacher, or a principal, or a member of the Board of Education, should not be sitting in a room saying, "I need XYZ," without the full building committee absolutely positively knowing about it. That is how this kind of stuff happens. And the fact that you go in and you build a shelf, and it's for the kitchen area, and then you can't fit the refrigerator that we have in place in that shelf, and then it's going to cost money to chip away and slide the refrigerator under. Why didn't somebody measure the refrigerator beforehand? This is a project that is so tight with money, that in the grand scheme of things, $2,000, as you all know, is a big deal. And I'm, I sat on the committee, I know what it's like, and I'm gone, and I miss my family, and I'm out every night, and I'm not trying to pile on, but this is extremely frustrating. And it's also frustrating from the Board of Education's standpoint, because we all know what we read in the newspapers about the Board of Ed being extravagant, and asking for this, that, and the other thing. There are so many things that we can learn from this, and I'm happy to sit down with anybody at any time and give you my insight from serving on this committee. But I did want to get that on the record, that we, there were things that we asked for that were ignored, and then there were things that we didn't want that we got. And I just think that the public should be aware of that, as well as you guys, and I appreciate you investigating all of this.
Thank you, and it sounds like we have some room for improvement, Karen.
Yes, we most certainly do. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, again, we don't normally do, but given your stats--
No, and all the--
Please, if you would--
The last time we did it, we allowed public comments on this, requesting whether we'd do it again.
Did you have something to add?
Having been on the other side of the table, last time, we got presented this a month ago, I have to say that there are some things that still need to be followed up on. First, I was quite concerned in regards to Mr. Special's presentation, in regards to seeming to put some of the blame for some of this on others. The bottom line is, the Connecticut General Statute firmly puts the buck stops with the building committee. If things are wanted, all decisions are, these decisions for additional things, those decisions are not made by architects, they're not made by Mrs. Roxby, the principal, they're not made by central administration, they're not made by the Board of Education. While all of them are welcome to offer their suggestions to the building committee, it is the building committee that makes the final decision against their budget about what goes into that building. So, comments in regards to, you know, we didn't know what was going on, there was private meetings, that should have been stopped early on, and if that's a problem with building committees going forward, this Board of Selectmen should stop, make that stop right now. Especially since we have Riverfield out there right now, as well. We shouldn't get to the point where we're wondering about these dropdown screens, corporate screens, copper roofs, all this other stuff, and people say that it was talked about at building committee meetings. You know, when the town bodies vote on things, they should know what they're authorizing to be built. This screen is a problem, and it's not $3,000. The number's actually, with installation cost, was closer to $5,000. It is a screen that is often found in Fortune 100 boardrooms, and should not, was not part of any educational specification, because there wasn't an educational specification, as you so pointed out, Mr. First Selectman. The fact that they thought they were building to an educational specification actually concerns me. We need a better way of handling these buildings, and it might be time to set up a committee to look at better ways to do it, because we, each project, we seem to be running into the same thing. I mean, this is just like the government with the $5,000 toilet seat, or something else like that, and the public and the town bodies are starting to lose confidence in the process. The architect was before me and you, the last time, saying that the positioning of that telephone, right below the screen, right where it's going to hit, was a building code requirement. Wallace Selectman, the very next day, I went and saw our building official, Mr. Gillar, and I asked him that question. There is absolutely no code in the state of Connecticut, or part of our regulations that requires that phone. That was a complete misrepresentation. You can ask Mr. Gillar yourself, he laughed at me when I asked him the question. The conference room design was poor. It provides no privacy and no respect to the occupants of that room, who are often talking about disciplinary issues, special education issues, health issues of children. One of the main reasons for doing that redesign of that administrative area, both the nurses' area and the administrative area, was to provide better and more respectful privacy, and respect to the students that go in there. One of the issues Mr. Special didn't deal with was the nails and screws, hundreds, if not thousands of them, that come down from the ceiling, that protrude three inches down as spikes that go down, and look, there was, I've not heard of how that issue's going to be addressed. Further, the issues with the steel beams, that are bare, appear to be rusting, have markers on them from measurements that construction workers made, but are clearly visible to people that are in both the offices, that are along the front of the building and the conference room. The building looks unfinished. We've all been, all three of you have been through the process on the RTM, whether on being on this board, or whether being on the Board of Finance, have been through these buildings and seen how these projects have come out. And after spending millions of dollars, the last thing we expect to see is an unfinished look, and that's what this building has. The punch list definition was kind of concerning to me. To me, there's punch list items, and I don't think this is a big definition. I mean, I'm a lawyer, I'm not a contractor, but I work with, and I've litigated cases on what items are on punch lists. There are punch list items, and there are change orders. To Mr. Kylie's point, when he asked the question, talked about, you open the wall and there's asbestos, that's not a punch list item, that's a change order, that's an unexpected circumstance. When you open a wall and you see that there's asbestos, the contractor comes to you with a price, because now that's a change, and the building committee has to either sign off on it, say, "We want you to make the change," or we don't. That's not a punch list item. A punch list item is for things that were supposed to be done-- A punch list item is for things that were supposed to be done, and have not been done, but we want to—even though we're getting a temporary CO, we'll move forward, and these other items will be moved forward. So, there is a major definitional difference in those things. One of the questions you started asking about, which I thought was important, was whether those punch list items have costs associated with them. You need to know that, because, for example, when we hear that the architect is going to redesign that conference room, and change the wall so it fits, does that mean that THP says, "Oh, I'm sorry for your mistake, but we'll repair it all for free?" I don't think so, but I think that you need to monitor whether that's the case, and what cost items are on this supposed punch list. I think this board has got to continue to monitor that punch list, because the last time we—the Mr. Special was before you, he was going to be working with the school, because obviously Mrs. Roxby and her staff are seeing little issues that come across, and the architect to come up with a joint punch list. I don't know whether they presented it to you, but you need to monitor that. I'd also suggest—I'm getting concerned that this project might go over budget, and this Board of Selectmen should monitor whether that's going to be the case. There are invoices that are outstanding, that no one has any ideas what the costs are. There are change orders, I'm sure, that are being made, that no one has any idea what the costs are. Something says that Mr. Special, or somebody from his committee, should be working with somebody like our controller, or somebody to get a better list, so that no one's surprised three or four months down the line if we go over budget. We have a FEMA requirement of what we can spend down there. If this is going to go over that, we've all admitted that during this process, and it was a very difficult process because of the FEMA requirements, that you have to monitor that, and nothing can send you over that, or requires the whole school to be rebuilt, which we cannot have happen. So, I think that this should be looked at now. Where are we? What monies have been spent? What's left to be spent? What change orders are in the pipeline that have been signed off by this building committee, and do they have estimates for them? And also, what invoices are outstanding? It's not simple enough to just say, "Right now, we're not over budget." Well, that's good. Does that mean we can go over budget next week for things we already know that are happening? I think we should all know that. That's all I have for right now. I just think that more questions need to be asked. I think you should continue to monitor the situation. I'm concerned about the numbers, and people should start looking at them. This building does not look finished, and that community deserves it to be finished, and for the process to just get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Since we opened it up, any other comments from the public?
All right, thank you. Just a couple of information points, both from my colleagues and for the public. There is a building projects review committee that has been working for the last few months to look at how we organize and how we do both school projects and non-school projects. It has representatives from the RTM, Board of Education, Central Office, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and we're working together to put that process. Several of the items that came up in here, I think are great case studies, and we'll look at in more detail, to kind of work through that. And as has been pointed out, we definitely want to use what we've learned here to share as a cycle of learning with both Riverfield, the Ward Roof Project, and other building committees going forward. One of the changes in our process of forming building committees is we now have a building committee orientation. We did it first for the Riverfield School Building Committee. We're doing it next Monday for the Ward Roof Building Committee. We bring the building committee in, talk to them about what's available to them, what resources they have, who they work with in town, and basically do our best to give them a good education as to what we expect, how the process works, who they work with from Central Office, as well as from the Town Hall. So, we'll continue to do that process and incorporate lessons learned into those sessions. Unless there's any more comments from the board, we'll move on to the next item. Next up is the Fair TV operational charge. May I have a—let's see, to hear, consider, and act upon revisions to the Fair TV Operational Committee charge, approved by the Board of Selectmen back in October 11, 2006, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved for discussion.
All right, in a second, thank you. Couple of things. I've had a chance to talk to several of the members who've served on this committee in the past. There are a host of things that came up that—I'm not personally fully prepared to offer my thoughts on this in total, and on one hand, I'd like us to consider postponing it, though we did have people that sat here—hi—and would like to—if they stayed their time, I'd like to get their comments, so the three of us can hear feedback, so it feeds into what we have to say on forward, if that's—
Be great to learn.
Okay with you all?
Absolutely.
All right, so if we can—I'd like to open this up to public comment as a start, if you have something to share with us here. If you'd just come to the podium and identify yourself, please. And thank you for hanging with us this late on this air-conditioned evening.
I'm glad to be here, and I'm absolutely pleased to see how you guys and women govern this town. I'm basically a Sullivan Democrat, so I haven't been around at meetings like this for quite a while, but I'm very pleased to be here. I have one little story to tell you—
Excuse me, could you—for the camera, could you introduce yourself and give us your name and address?
Howard Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
I am at 666 Sturgis Highway in Fairfield.
Thank you.
It's a division street. Across the street is—
Glad you're on the Fairfield side.
Right. Let me just say this. Why am I here? Well, one of the things that I did submit today had to do with governance, and I have a little story to tell, and really, this one is for Kevin Kylie. Jackie Darrell, many years ago, I was chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee for 12 years, well-representing Fairfield. And we did an awful lot of good things, and we had a lot of hardships that we couldn't deal with. So, suddenly, I got a call from Jackie, and she said, "Howard, I've heard that there's a lot of trouble with Cable Vision getting them to recognize the community access stations, and we need some help on that." And, well, this is Jackie calling me, a Democrat, to do the job. And I said, "Well, I'll do it, Jackie, if you give me your promise that—I'll serve for one year, give me your promise that you'll take over," because she was retiring, by the way, "and then you'll serve the second year and the third year, whatever's required." Unfortunately, knowing Jackie, and knowing the kind of things she gets involved in, I was stuck. I didn't realize it, but I was stuck. And so, I took the job for a Republican, and I felt that I could do the work for both parties that day, and so that's why I'm here. And I had 12 years serving this town as chairman of the Cable Advisory Council. Dealing—essentially, at that point in time, we were just dealing with Cable Vision, because they were doing a lot of things that were naughty, let me say it that way, things that they should have done properly. For example, they had collapsed three channels, which are required by law, into one.
Yeah. Mr. Jacobson, I can ask you to focus your remarks on the charge for the Fair TV—
I'm going to do that, exactly.
If you could do that sooner rather than later, that would be appreciated.
Yes, well, that's why I brought up the one of the items that I mentioned on my list to you. Rotate leadership of committee to accommodate changes of governance. That's an important idea, and I think it belongs in your considerations here for what Fair TV does. I did submit my list. I did—
I think that just—I think that came in today, I don't know if you copied on that, we will get you a copy of that.
I can actually give you my copy.
You have extra copies.
Thank you.
Sure, Chris, I think you got one.
Oh, great. My main point is, I'd be very happy to help if the offer comes to me to be a part of this. I've had a lot of time with it, but I'm still interested in seeing that Fair TV—I'm a great advocate of town-specific. I said, when I was serving on Cable Advisory Council Chair, I wanted town-specific. I couldn't get it, unfortunately, from Soundview Community Media. And the other thing I want to say is, don't forsake the other towns who've been helpful in getting the process going for town-specific. I mean, Woodbridge, Orange, Milford, that sort of thing.
Again, Mr. Jacobson, one, we thank you for your service on the CAC, and you are still serving on it, so thank you again for your volunteer—
I thank you for having me.
And appreciate your comments on Fair TV, we try to move that forward.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And Mr. Kennedy, I think you were out of the room at the time, but just to say, we're going to look at—it—I certainly had a chance to talk with you and others, I was kind of drinking out of a fire hose on some of this, as you might expect. So, I'm going to propose to the board that we postpone this, but because you all were good enough to sit through this, I didn't want to not give you a chance to comment, also then you get a chance to address the full board a bit in doing that, so. So, any comments on the Fair TV charge, if you'd like to, please?
I'll keep it narrow, the fact. Thank you, Mr. First Electman. My name is Jim Canale, I live at 117 Edgewood Place, I'm currently the chairman of the Fair TV Operational Committee. Another way of describing it is the last man standing, sort of like being one of the drummers in Spinal Tap, but I don't understand that reference. I've had the honor of serving on the Fair TV Committee for four years, and as the chairman for the better part of the last three and a half years. The work has been long and very challenging, and a whole host—across a whole host of issues, technical and political and all the rest, and that's probably a discussion for another day. I did, at your suggestion, provide the Board of Selectmen with a—with resolution language, which I think—and I also distributed that to Mr. Jacobson and to other members that are interested—or interested parties in Fair TV. But I worked out draft resolution language, looking at what the charge of the—or laying out the core charge of a new Fair TV Committee. The reason I say that is, is because the current committee has completed its work. The Operational Fair TV Committee has built the platform you see today, and there's a terrific story to be told about the twisted history and all the rest, and Mr. Jacobson went into that, but the Operational Committee has done its work. Today, every single resident in Fairfield, on Fair TV Education, on Fair TV Government, and on Fair TV On Demand, can watch this meeting, can watch Board of Education meetings, can watch the representative town meeting, can watch the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, can watch the Board of Finance—I should say Board of Finance. They can see those four core meetings that affect every citizen, live, and on tape, and online, so they can see them at their convenience, they can see them at the time they happen, they can watch them on cable television, on Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut, and very soon, we hope that we'll be able—to be able to see them as well, very shortly, on ATT U-verse. But going forward, now that the technical work of building the station is complete, the successor committee to this Fair TV Committee, the new Fair TV Committee, in my view will be—and if you get a chance to look at that resolution language, should be, in terms of voting membership, fairly small. My suggestion was a committee of three voting members, a Democrat, an Independent, or unaffiliated, and a Republican, people who could have interest in the issue, but people that everyone respects as being willing to be fair judges, if you will. But that voting group would be supported by four other members, and my hope is, we can reach out to members that would be essentially supporting the work, and they would come from the Board of—they would come from the library, from the Board of Education and PTA, from the Fairfield Historic Center and Museum, and also from the League of Women Voters, the Fairfield Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Those groups have an interest in seeing what I would describe to you as the non-standard schedule. That would be events that are not those core meetings I described to you, but they produce events and meetings that have great value to the town, and that we have covered over the years. And their participation as non-voting but supporting members of such a committee, and having that charge in place, I think has great value. It would ensure that there's a dialogue between these entities and the committee. Also, it would help us in making sure that when—because they bring so many of these kinds of civic and educational meetings, they have these kinds of meetings, so many of them, that we can—we can work them into that schedule in a manner that is coherent and fair and balanced, as opposed to just having people kind of send us email, you know, stuff over the transom, or trying to decide, do we have the budget to be able to cover these kinds of things? We could do it in a more systematized fashion. Finally, regarding the charge of the new committee, I think it would also be valuable to have the director of the IT Department, and what I hope eventually we will have will be a station manager. Essentially, now, our executive producer, Gerard Spino, Jerry Spino, who people often will hear, he's sort of the Freddie de Cordova of Fair TV, people always referencing him. Jerry Spino does an unbelievable job. I mean, he really—if you have a citation to give out this year, this is a fellow who deserves it. Beyond being an activist about this issue for years, I can't even begin to tell you the number of man-hours he has put in unpaid, or insanely underpaid, to keep Fair TV functioning. It's truly a labor of love. But my hope is, is that as the committee forms, that Mr. Spino will be the person that will be designated as what would be described as a station manager, who would also support the committee by explaining to the committee members and keeping them updated about how the station runs day to day, and basically keeping them informed about everything from hard drives that might fail, to larger issues about where we might go in terms of types of coverage. I'll leave it there, but I would just ask you to look at that draft resolution I presented, and I hope in a future meeting, we can discuss the wise and whereforest of some of the other elements of that. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. There's—I've got a host on my plate today, just that if there's any comments you all want to make, that's fine, but I would, at this point—
Good.
—move to postpone this to a date certain, and I'd say probably August 1st, because I don't think we can get it done in a week. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the postponement?
Yeah, I think it makes sense in terms of Selectman Kylie is coming on board today, and I think for all of us to be able to take in those comments, and each of each one of us, we have whatever view, and seek out additional information. I just will comment, oh, this is the motion to postpone, so I do—I do support the motion to postpone, so that we can all be fully prepared, so I'll leave my comments to that, and save my other comments for the main motion.
Okay, to the public. Any comments from the public on the motion to postpone, and the motion to postpone only, please? All right, back to the board, you ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, Subcommittee on Not-for-Profits, discussion of the charge of the Subcommittee Now, we do have one advantage on this committee, that one of our members sits on it. So, this is the discussion—would you like to lead on some, or you want me to pick off?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Yes, I have been sitting on this, and I was sitting on the original committee, which, as it turns out, we had—prior to this past meeting, at the past meeting of this group, there was much discussion in the—
If I could ask for some quiet and back, please?
Discussion in the committee about the charge, the committee voted on the charge, and in the process of that conversation, I pointed out, as we're—the cycle of learning is happening here, and in the First Electman's office, in terms of dotting i's and crossing t's, formation of committee, that it be best that if this were a committee of the First Electman or the Board of Selectmen, that it would come before the Board of Selectmen are being voted on. And thanks to some wonderful research done by Ms. Carpenter, we—she uncovered that this committee was actually originally formed by the Board of Finance. committee was actually originally formed by the Board of Finance. And I think the members of the Board of Finance on this, what we're calling now Subcommittee, all recalled that the First Selectmen had kicked it off and were under the impression that that's what had happened. So, given that, I think a couple things about this need to happen. One is, I think, even after the committee, I realized it's not, this wouldn't be a Subcommittee. It would be a committee of whatever body it is, since there are members from multiple bodies, so I think we need to look at that, just the nomenclature, which was a realization that happened after we last met. But the nature of the conversation at Subcommittee level was really about recommendations that would primarily go to the First Selectmen in terms of starting off the budget process. So at this point, I would recommend that we take a step back from this. I would recommend, and I said this to the Subcommittee/Committee, that the work continues and the conversation continues, but in terms of clarifying any charge, that we step back and there be a conversation with the Chair, that we ask the First Selectmen to have a conversation with the Chair of the Board of Finance, and the Chair of this committee, which is Board of Finance Member DeWitt, and to talk about that, because, again, there was agreement at the committee level that we were hoping to give those recommendations to the First Selectmen. We just put the language Board of Selectmen in here, knowing that I sit at the table and we can, would be able to help fill in. I'm happy to take questions about this, if we want to talk about it further, or no. Wait until there's a conversation that happens and then come back to it.
It is an interesting dynamic, since you and I sat on the Board of Finance when we approved it.
I know.
Both voted on it.
So, does it sound like we have to, after discussions, would Mr. Flynn possibly abolish the current committee and start a new committee that reports directly to this board or to Mr. Tetro? Is that kind of what I'm hearing? Without disrupting their work or membership or any of that, is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
I would think we can clarify that in the charge, potentially, assuming it's agreeable to everybody in that. My point is, we went back and did the research, and you have the minutes, I think, in your packet here from, you know, the total dollars, total budget for the year, percent of budget.
Right.
I think we might, may want to reemphasize that to the current members of the committee in terms of those, there's some of the outputs that we're looking for.
Right.
Coming out of here, because I think the, it's both one-part process, how organizations get on and off, and one part, some of those guidance, guidelines, if you will.
May I comment to that? I think we, the committee has discussed those items, and I believe that one of the committee members was here, is now, that's a part, okay. And this is helpful to go back to, but there were some other logistical steps that the previous committee had actually discussed, too, that weren't necessarily as specific as this. So I think, I think that the question is, do we want, is this, is these things here, and this being, and I'll read this so that the public has access to this, the minutes...
Could you describe the minutes from which?
Yes, these are the minutes from the Board of Finance meeting.
December 7th, 2010.
Yes, December 7th, 2010, yes. So when the original group was established, and it was suggested that criteria be created for private agency funding, which should include the following: total dollars for each year, total budget for each year, percent of budget for each year. What I'll call Subcommittee, the current name, has discussed that, but recognized that there were some other broader conversations that might need to happen before we were able to get to that point, and that we may not be able to get to that point in terms of a recommendation process. So I would just note that, you know, going forward, that was accounted for, but that there was kind of a broader hope. We certainly, we spent a lot of time talking about what the language in this charge meant and what we were trying to get to, and ended up broadening the language to be not necessarily as solution and goal-focused necessarily, but to recognize that we were asking questions and not going into it with already an outcome in mind. In other words, we really wanted to have a conversation rather than saying, this is what we're...
All right. Given the understanding that this is going to come back before us, I'm very comfortable having a talk with Mr. Flynn and Mr. DeWitt, and just kind of coming to a meeting of the minds as to how this should move forward.
Okay.
With the least amount of disruption, Mr. Kylie, as you pointed out.
Right.
Sure.
So if that's okay, we'll just...
That's great.
Proceed on that basis and move on to the next topic on our agenda.
May I ask if there are, there may be those, I know there was someone who was here previously who may have had comments, one of the members, and there may be others. Would you be willing to open it up?
Generally, it's our process to allow public comment on items that we vote on, but on discussion on reports to the body. Given that the lateness of the hour and the amount somebody's put to to sit here in this quasi-air-conditioned space, I certainly wouldn't want to deny them an opportunity under those, so we'll call those extenuating environmental circumstances, and if there is any comment from the public, we'd be happy to hear. All right. Oh.
Oh.
Stanler, if you'll take the podium and identify yourself to the viewing audience.
I was going to say, this is early for me.
Normally, you haven't started yet.
And Stanler, RTM, Mr. Fly, Cora, and Mr. Pulevog. I think the other member of the committee was under the impression this might not actually be discussed today, so she didn't remain. My comments have nothing to do with her, so...
And again, just to be clear, this will come back with the board, so...
I understand, so she...
Nobody missed anything.
Right. I just wanted to offer a suggestion in the discussions. As I looked at this charge, it seemed to me that the larger issue, which is in this charge, and wasn't read from the minutes, is, is there any criterion for a nonprofit or a not-for-profit being funded by the town of Fairfield, or receiving money from the town of Fairfield? And that seems to me should be a central issue under discussion. Other than that, I did have some thoughts about this, but since it's coming back, perhaps I can just send this by email to the existing members of the committee, or perhaps through Selectman McCarthy-Vehi and...
That would be good, and then if, to the extent they're about the work of the committee, it might be best going to the committee. To the extent they're about the charge or what the objects or goals should be, perhaps they're best going to both groups, both this board and that board.
Fine.
So we can offer our comments and support of whatever you might...
I appreciate you'd be willing to look at them. I will do that.
Please, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I follow up?
Go right ahead.
Just to follow up, the language in the first goal, that was primarily the intention in terms of criteria, and it's an issue of language. As you know, words, sometimes we all disagree about words, and we tried to come to the best agreement, but that's very much in the mind of the committee, and I appreciate any feedback, certainly.
All right. Well, thank you. With the board's permission, we'll move on to the next item. Town Attorney, to hear, consider and act upon a request from the Town Attorney. I will read this all, just so we have it in. To hear, consider and act upon a request from the Town Attorney to authorize Michael C. Tetro, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, to execute on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a conservation and public recreation easement and agreement under the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Program with the state of Connecticut for financial assistance to acquire permanent interest in land known as the Bridgeport Diocese property, OSWA 61, and to manage said land as an open space land pursuant to Section 7-131D of the General Connecticut Statutes. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Again, the Town Attorney was going to be here to do this. He was unavailable today and also had some issues with some follow-up material that he was still getting back from the state, and some of it, I believe, was being delivered today to him, so he wouldn't have time to review it.
Okay.
He has asked that we postpone this to a date certain, and I was thinking our next meeting.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, but we haven't moved it yet to that, but yes, it would be. If that is okay with the board.
Are you looking for a second?
Yes.
Okay, I will second your motion.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the postponement to our next meeting? Any discussion from the public, comments from the public on postponing this item to our next meeting?
When is your next meeting?
We'll discuss that in just a minute.
I was ahead of myself.
All right, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I believe there are no tax collective refunds, so that item is not here. Then to hear and consider and act upon any communications, we don't have that. To hear and consider and act upon any other business, which should probably come before this meeting. The item I had in question was an administrative one of moving our next meeting from the 18th to the 11th, which would be a week from yesterday. Is that okay with members of the board? Does that look good now?
It works for me. It does. Mr.?
That would be wonderful.
Is that good for you?
All right.
Fantastic.
Good.
You want a motion to adjust our schedule to move the July 18th meeting to July 11th?
Yes.
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the public? All right, back to the board. You ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get our proper notice. Meg, I trust that answers your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So try to not get ahead of ourselves on that. All right. I think that's all that we have on the agenda at the moment, and in honor of his first meeting, Mr. Kylie, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
You did it.
All right, you made it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you very much.